Good evening. Today is Monday, August the 14th, and this is the Cabarrus County Board of Education Business Meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please stand as we say the Pledge of Allegiance, and Dr. Kirk will lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board members, it's time to set the agenda. Is there a motion to set the agenda as written?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Fur makes the motion, and Ms. Furtenball follows up with a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the agenda as written, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, the agenda has been adopted. That moves us to Section 4, which is recognitions. The North Carolina Outstanding Biology Teacher, Mr. Allred's coming up to talk to us.
If I could get Lori Triver and Andrew Crook to please join us at the front. We should have recognized Ms. Triver back in June, on June 12th, but were you grading AP exams? Yeah, she was doing work, as she always is, is what would probably earned her this award and other ones in her career. So let me quickly just read what we're recognizing her for tonight. Every year, the National Association of Biology Teachers awards the Outstanding Biology Teacher Award. This program recognizes an outstanding biology educator in each of the 50 states, Washington, DC, Canada, Puerto Rico, and overseas territories. A major portion of the nominee's career must have been devoted to the teaching of biology and life science. Candidates are judged on their teaching ability and experience, cooperativeness in the school and community, and student-teacher relationships. So, I've known Lori since I started here about five and a half years ago, and what I'll say about her is she exemplifies everything I'd want in a teacher. I would want my kid in her class, and I know if any of you have ever been in her class, you'd want that. Now, I'll tell just a story about how I get to know her. So when we need someone to show off our district, Lori's the one that we call. So most times I'm in your classroom is because we've called up and said, "We need to bring somebody from a neighboring district, a neighboring school that needs to see how education is done." She exemplifies what I would say student decisions based on data, not just database decisions. She's had a 25-plus-year career probably teaching, 23 and a half, 23?
Thirty.
Thirty, thirty years. See, Andrew, I have wrong information. She has more teaching experience than we thought. And one of the things I love about Lori is she never stops innovating. She never stops changing. She never stops asking what works, and she never stops looking at that data. She's served on the school improvement team. She's helped implement Power Block at Central Cabarrus High School, and I can't even imagine all the other things you've done. I know you've been Teacher of the Year since I've been here, I think in 2016, and we just really are proud that you represent our district for the entire state of North Carolina and the nation. So, thank you so much, congratulations.
When you think of all the North Carolina staff and faculty that have received awards this year, it's just amazing, the quality of teachers that we have in this county. Board members, it comes to approval of minutes. Believe you've had time to read through them. Is there a motion to approve the minutes as written?
It's a motion.
Mr. Walter makes the motion. Ms. Furtenball seconds that. Any discussion on the minutes from July the 10th? Hearing none? All right, let's vote. All in favor of approving the minutes from July the 10th, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, those minutes are approved, seven to zero. And that carries us into the reports. Today, I had an opportunity to go to Mount Pleasant Middle School, and they're really hustling and bustling to get ready for the Sunday. So if you have an opportunity, people that are members of our viewing audience, please take your time to come out at 3:00 on Sunday, as we have our big opening of Mount Pleasant. It's been a long, long-awaited opening for that middle school. And that's about all I have. I'll turn it over to Dr. Lauter.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're excited about the start of the 2017-18 school year, and we're looking forward to welcoming students back on August 28th. Parents and students can find information they need regarding the new school year on the Back to School website at www.cabarrus.k12.nc.us. The site is a one-stop shop for information about enrollment, school year calendars, bail schedules, transportation, and pretty much just about anything that is beginning of school. In preparation for the new school year, we're also accepting applications for free and reduced school meals. You can apply online at www.lunchapplication.com. There also will be a small number of paper applications available at CCS schools later this week. Families must complete a new household application for benefits each school year. You can contact the School Nutrition Program Office at 704-784-5136 if you have any questions. Teachers and school staff will be back in our buildings later this week. We actually welcomed our brand-new teachers to the profession last week, and we will celebrate new teachers tomorrow to luncheon hosted by the Cabarrus Regional Chamber and sponsored by Chamber members. We appreciate the support from the Chamber and its members for all of our new teachers and welcoming them to Cabarrus County. And we will, as Mr. Shoemaker said, we will celebrate the opening of the new Mount Pleasant Middle School during a dedication ceremony this Sunday, August the 20th, at 3:00 PM. Parents, staff, students, and community are invited to attend. The school is located at 466 Walker Road in Mount Pleasant. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lauter. All right, we're at Section 7, which is guest speakers, and we have one guest speaker. In accordance with our board policy, 2310, as revised by the board on May 11, 2015, a part of each business meeting will be set aside for citizens to address the board. Sign-up cards will be available for any individual or group to indicate their desire to address the board. Speakers must hand a completed card to the board clerk no later than 6:00 PM, the normal start time of the regularly-scheduled monthly business meeting. The board chair will decide the time devoted to public comments. Speakers must complete the contact card, including their name, group name, if applicable, address and phone number, and the list of general education-related topic of their presentation for the board minutes. Tonight, Ms. Koshia Sandridge would like to come speak to us about the Concord High School turnover and the cultural survey results. Thank you, Ms. Sandridge. Sandage, sorry.
All right, good evening. It's been some time since I've addressed this board. In the past few weeks, I've reached out to at least two of the board members sitting up there today relating the concerns for Concord High School, later initiated at CHS. Since new administration at CHS for the last school year, it's been reported to me that 32 teachers and faculty members have resigned, for whatever reason. Not sure if that number's correct, but that's what's being reported, and I don't have the official numbers from the superintendent, which I've requested. I've been told by both the superintendent and the director of high schools for the county that those numbers are in line with what other schools throughout the county experience. I find this concerning when I factor in many complaints brought to my attention from students, parents of current students at CHS, and also from former teachers. As an added layer of confirmation for my concerns, and the concerns of many parents and students that I've spoken with, there is a culture survey that was completed sometime in April, I believe, I could be wrong on that date, where some 80 comments, 80-plus comments, were very negative in nature in relation to the administration there at Concord High School. So for me, that's concerning on several levels. My child is a senior, and my child is a senior who is nationally recognized, and he has a lot that's on his plate right now. So when I hear that there's a possibility of first-year teachers coming in to teach those students that are already at a vulnerable high school, in my opinion, based on the population that it serves, it makes me wonder if he's going to be successful in his 12th grade year. So, what I've asked the superintendent already, and what I'm hoping will be done, is that you guys detail for me how the board, or how the superintendent, or how the director of high school is planning to manage Concord High School going forward, because I have a daughter who will also be going to Concord High School. So I just hope you guys hear my concerns and you do something about them. I did not plan to name any names today, that's not the type of person I am, but I do know that you guys have heard those names, and I hope that you will do something about them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sandage. Our board members, we'll move to the approval of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as written?
It's a motion.
Mr. Harrison makes the motion.
Second.
And Ms. Carpenter seconds that. All right, all in favor of approving the consent agenda as written, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. And that motion carries seven to zero. We'll now move to the action agenda. 9.1 is the adoption of the board resolution for the 2017-18 year. Ms. Klutz will be coming, or do you need? Board members, Ms. Klutz will be coming to the podium for any questions that you may have. Are there any questions for her? Ms. Carpenter?
Yes. I do have one question. On the budget, I had voiced concerns the last time, and I need from you, Kelly, where would you find the vestibules? What line item or what group would that be included in?
That's not a question I'm prepared to answer today. I don't have the detailed information in front of me. If I would have had that last week or during the week, it would have been really easy for me to find that information for you. It's in that really long list, that $250 million list? It's in that document, but don't have that.
I mean, is it in, is it in capital?
It is in capital.
I mean, would it be just capital altogether in cap? But the reason I'm, I mean, in the whole, the budget's okay? That's the only problem that I have a problem with. And so I would say I would approve the budget for everything, because I asked this board to move those vestibules up to number five. I couldn't get a consensus with the board to do that. I would love for them to do it, especially after I went to all the training for safety. I was a week with the SROs, and safety, again, is a very, very high priority with me. After I attended all this safety training the last two weeks, it is even more of a higher priority with me now. I still would like to see those vestibules up to number five. And with that not being the case, I can approve this budget if we pull those, that part out. I could approve the budget otherwise. I hate to throw the baby out with the bathwater, because I know the teachers need the raises, a lot of other good things are in the budget, so I could approve it if I pulled that section out. And that's why I was wondering where they're at. If it is capital, I could say, I can approve it without capital.
It is capital, and just one piece of information that I don't know if it'll change your mind or alter you any way, the funding request has been, our local county funding has been determined, and there were, there was no dollars allocated for that area.
No capital?
Regardless of whether you're number one or number 221, there were no funds allocated for that.
So no capital dollars were allocated at all?
For that area. So we have a $1,020,000 that's allocated to the other area, like buses and trucks, those kinds of things, that area. But outside of that, outside of the schools, the $75 million that we just got approved, the money for the architect and for the elementary schools, those kinds of things, other than that, no maintenance dollars for the capital.
So we're not going to do any maintenance at all this year?
Well, those, the capital projects that's on that list, that $225 million list, there were no dollars allocated specifically for that, so.
But aren't we going to be doing some of those projects? Because normally, they try to do some during the year.
So if they have money in October, November, after their audit, certainly that's a conversation that would be had, but the conversations that we've been having are more toward the new schools and the architects and the engineering and all of those type things, that the short files for the high school, that kind of thing. So it's hard to tell, you never know.
So you don't think they would?
I don't, I don't know. I just know that right now, they have adopted the budget, the capital budget, and we didn't get any funding for that list.
For that list, so no funding?
With that list, there's no funding. So it doesn't really matter if you move it to five or you move it to 10, there's no funding for it this year.
This year, there's not?
There's none.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right, with that in mind, okay, I'm going to take your word for it. If they, if they start building something, I know who to come back to. All right.
So Ms. Carpenter, are you willing to make a motion?
Don't look at me, y'all, go ahead and make it.
You sounded all happy. I just thought you were going to go ahead and finish something.
All happy, I'm not real all happy, but if I see something build, I'm all, who to come back to.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Furtenball? Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to make a motion that the budget resolution for 2017-18 be approved as presented.
Second.
And Mr. Harrison will make the second to that. Any more discussion on the budget? Hearing none, all in favor of this motion of passing our 2017-18 budget, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. And so the budget is approved for 2017-18. That carries us to 9.2, which is the approval of the City of Concord and Cabarrus County SRO contracts and MOU. Ms. Klutz is available for any more, any questions. Board members, are there questions regarding this order of business?
I make a motion that we approve the contracts attached.
Second. I'd like to abstain from the city contract.
All right, hold on. So Ms. Carpenter makes the motion, Mr. Harrison seconds it. Now we're going to the conversation stage. Mr. Walter would like to abstain from the voting.
Just for the city contract.
Just for the city contract. All right.
Do we need to take a vote on that, or?
So, board members, let's, we'll just vote on the city contract, so that we can have this in two pieces, and then Mr. Walter can vote on the one that he wants to vote on.
So moved.
So, so is it all right if we split it into two motions? Okay, so we'll vote on the city contract first. Ms. Furtenball was the one, Ms. Carpenter made the motion, so all in favor of the MOU for the city contract, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay, we'll now go to, that motion carried six to zero with Mr. Walter abstaining. Now we'll go to the contract for Cabarrus County.
Make a motion for the county?
Okay, Ms. Carpenter.
Second.
Mr. Harrison makes a motion for that. All in favor? Or is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. And that motion carries seven to zero. And then we have the MOU, since we broke it out like that. Is the MOU for both city and county? Because this one here, the way it says, is the MOU for the city and contract, one document, and then says financial contract for the city. So it really should have been city and county.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, it just says contract, I think it just got that spelled there.
Yeah, yeah. So, motion for that?
I make a motion to approve the MOU.
Okay.
For?
The city and the county?
City and county.
Second.
David Harrison makes the motion, makes the second. Ms. Carpenter makes the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. So all three objects have been completed, and that carries us over to 9.3, approval of the policy 2500 on the first reading. Ms. Reimer is up here, ready for any questions that you may have. Are there questions on 2500 hearings before the board? Board members? Ms. Furtenball?
No, I just wanted to thank, between staff and the attorneys, I think the wording works to the intent we said, so.
Mr. Harrison, did you have a comment?
No, sir.
Okay. All right, is there a motion to approve 2500 hearings before the board?
So moved.
Second. This is on the first reading?
Yes, sir, this is on the first reading, I'm sorry. Yeah, so we have Ms. Furtenball making the motion, Mr. Fur seconding it, so we'll be voting on policy 2500 on the first reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, that motion carries for 2500, seven to zero. That carries us to 9.4, which is approval of policy 4150 on the first reading. Do you have any comments or questions on this one, board members? Mr. Walter?
I'm just not comfortable with the changes. I don't like the changes. I think it's not in the best interest of students if you just read it that way, so I'm not in favor of it.
Ms. Furtenball?
I just want to ask Mr. Walter, clarification on which part were you concerned?
That'd be on page 5, Section B.
How would you want that to be different?
I'd have to give that some thought, and maybe a policy committee could do that.
Okay. I just, I thought it was fairly comprehensive and also equitable to all parties.
It just takes away a lot of the, takes away a lot of the wording that, in my opinion, seemed to protect a student, or at least give the student an option. I think it just adds burden.
But that was not a part of the changes to the, actually, to the policy we had.
There's a lot of strikeouts, that's what I'm focused more on than the additions.
Mr. Walter, we did take this to policy, and I will just defer to our attorneys, because I think this is in alignment with the general statute.
Yeah, the, the changes that were recommended were to get this policy in line with statute. There's no exception to the statute for somebody who moves at any point in the school year, regardless of whether it's a student.
I understand that, I just, if you read through it, it just does not seem to be in the best interest of the student. The way it was seemed to be a lot better.
Okay.
If the statute says that, you gotta do it.
All right, board members, anyone else have a comment on 4150? Is there a motion on 4150?
Move to adopt 4150.
Mr. Harrison makes a motion to adopt.
On first reading.
On the first read. Is there a second to Mr. Harrison's motion to adopt 4150 on the first read?
I'll second.
Okay, Ms. Furtenball seconds that motion. Any more discussion on 4150? Hearing none, let's vote. All in favor of approving 4150 school assignment transfers and program choice enrollment on the first read, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Was it, was it just, was it, was it just you?
Yep.
Okay, I couldn't, couldn't understand what I heard. All right, so that was a six-one vote. That carries us to 9.5, approval of 4700 on the second read. Ms. Reimer's up here to answer any questions that you may have on that. Are there questions for Ms. Reimer on 4700? That is the student records policy, which is a certain board member's favorite policy. I don't hear any comments, so, board members, is there a motion to approve 4700, the student records on the second read?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Fur makes the motion, Mr. Harrison seconds it. Any more, any discussion on this motion? Let's vote. All in favor of approving policy 4700 on the second read for student records, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay. Ms. Carpenter votes in the negative. That carries us to 9.6, approval of policy 5008, that is the automated phone and text messaging, and this is a new policy. Board members, are there any comments or questions for Ms. Reimer? Mr. Walter?
Okay, I guess last month, we talked about we're not texting anybody. Is that still correct?
I'm going to let Ms. Boone come and speak. She's been working on some guidelines for us, as we spoke last week.
That's correct. We, we are not using the texting feature at this point.
Okay. And then you came up with some administrative guidelines?
I'm, I'm still working on them.
You're still in the process of that?
Yes, sir.
And have we gotten any feedback from our principals on this policy? No, okay. I'd like to wait until I get that before I can approve this policy. And secondly, I don't know why we need to add text messaging if we're not even, if that's not even something we do as, as a school system.
Well, we have the, the option and the ability to do that, that's just not a feature that we have ever opted to use.
Well, if it is, then I think we should include it. If it's not, then I don't think it needs to be in here.
I would just say, from, from my perspective and the principals, that we would want that option. Doesn't mean we will always use it. Some of our principals do, and teachers work with parents and different people, so to remove it would be limiting us, but...
We don't have it now, anyway, I mean, that's...
No, we do have it, we just have chosen not to use it at this point.
Right, I'm saying in policy, there's no policy right now. Anyway, I would like the feedback from the principals before I'd be comfortable in voting on this policy.
Thank you, Ms. Walter. Are there any other comments on this particular policy, board members? Ms. Car, oh, no. All right, is there a motion on this, on policy 5008?
Move to adopt 1508 on the second reading.
Second.
All right, Mr. Harrison makes the motion, Mr. Fur seconded that motion to approve policy 5008, automated phone and text messaging on the second read. All right, board members, any more discussion? Hearing none, let's vote. All in favor of approving this policy? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
All right, so that is five to two. That's five to two, Ms. Monroe, that's with Mr. Walter and Ms. Carpenter, voting in the That moves us to 9.7. Mr. Lauter will be coming forward for this, and this is the approval of the final design-build contract for Lyle's Construction for the new Performance Learning Center.
Thank you, board members. Last week, I think we presented a contract to you, of course, it still had the red lines. This week, you have the final contract ahead of you, in front of you, with all the signatures from the contractors, and waiting for a signature from Mr. Shoemaker, should you approve.
Board members, the contract is identical to what it was last week, except it doesn't have any red in it this time.
I'd like to approve.
All right, I have Mr. Fur making a motion to approve.
And I'm certainly willing to second that, Mr. Chairman, but can I make a general statement? This is a huge, complicated 60-page document, is in PDF, and it doesn't allow for searching. And basically, I feel like I'd have to read the whole thing to get through it, and if there were ever any opportunities for a professional synopsis or a staff synopsis of a document this, this large, I certainly would appreciate it. Or if the PDF process, there are several different types of PDF, is what I'm trying to get at, that, that allow you to search for certain characters or certain phrases, for example. Can't do that at all with this document, the way it is. I'm sure the document itself is a legal document, it's fine, but I don't know how to review it if I can't, if I have to search and literally read from page one to page 60. That's just future reference, though, but the, the terms themselves are fine.
It is a standard document that is only editable if you have the program that you purchase on a yearly basis from AIA to be able to do so. That's why the document is done that way, so you can't make changes to it or can't make any, so it's kind of an odd PDF, but I'm sure we can work something with it and see if I can find a way that you could do a search within it.
Yeah, they should be able to make it searchable. There's, like David said, there's many different levels of PDFs, so they should be able to still make it searchable.
Or just an executive summary that highlighted the major topics, but again, that's a future reference suggestion, please. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Walter?
Yeah, could you just review 1.1.6 one more, with us one more time? And that's dealing with the budget.
Budget for this project is $4.25, $4.24 million. The port, the... The portion, the project is for construction of the facility, for the design build contract is $3,030,291. The other monies are outside the contract, which is purchase of land, fees, furniture, and that sort of thing that we had to have outside of the contract.
So this, this contract is for 3,030,000?
It's for the building itself, and the, and the...
Okay, and this extra stuff about furniture and others, other things, is that, that's part of it as well? Is that part of the 3 million?
No, it just, it just says outside the design scope, so the contractor identified those items are outside of his scope of the actual design build portion of the contract. We'll purchase most of that directly.
But all we're dealing with, with this contract here is that 3 million?
3,030,291.
And that'll get us the building?
Yes, sir, and the parking lot.
And the parking lot opened by when?
Opened by December of 2018.
Okay.
Any other comments on this? And Mr. Lauter, this is the first design build that this district has done in a long, long time?
This building was the only other one that I'm aware of.
So this building was built how long ago?
15 years ago, maybe.
And the county has done some.
Yeah.
They did the jail.
The county did the jail, and the City of Concord did the city hall, but it's the first time the school system has beyond this point.
Thank you. All right, board members, we have a motion from Mr. Fur and a second by Mr. Harrison to approve the final design build contract for Lyles Construction Company for the new Performance Learning Center. Is there any more discussion on this? Seeing none or hearing none, all in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. All right, that motion carries seven to zero. It carries us to nine point eight, the approval of the architect selection for the new Southwest Elementary School. Are there questions for Mr. Lauter on this? Board members?
Move to approve...
Thank you.
Yates-Creisberg as our architect for the new elementary school, Southwest Elementary School.
All right, and Mr. Walter, Mr. Walter makes a second. Now, Ms. Furtenball, you'd like to...
Yeah, I would just like Mr. Lauter to review the selection criteria and how they came to their conclusion or recommendation.
The selection process began with an RFQ on June 20th this year. We received 10 proposals. With those 10 proposals, we had an evaluation criteria that we went through and evaluated based on what we asked for in the RFQ. Several participated in that matrix. The matrix then were pulled together, and we narrowed it down to four finalists, our shortlist groups. With those four shortlists, firms, we invited them in for an interview last week on August 1st and August 3rd. We held the interviews here, and then our selection team from the school was able to ask them questions and review from them. What we asked for in the interview was for the last 45 minutes, or 30 minutes set aside for the presentation. We gave information to each one of the teams, such as topography, zoning. We also told them that the county was considering having a park on the project, and as well as where the utilities were, and then asked them to come back to us and present to us how they, as a team, would help us to build this facility on this site by August 2019. And in doing so, we evaluated their presentations on how their team would approach the project for delivery beginning of August 2019, and their, their schedule. Some had some very aggressive schedules, some had not so aggressive schedules, some had very limited time for construction, so those are all taken into consideration. Understanding the project's scope and the site conditions, based on what they gave to us and how they presented to us, we understood how they, that they saw the site the same way we saw it, and what they would have to do in order to make that school work on a site that has somewhat sloped topography. Also, the track record of all time and on budget delivery from the previous elementary projects, some for our district, some not for our district, but to make sure that they had that, they talked to us about that and understand how they were going to try to achieve that for us. I said we looked at the team's creativity on utilizing the site, creating the modern education building. We felt like it would meet our current and future needs, because obviously, the site was not probably conducive to just building a one-story, 600 by 600-foot square-type building. Then we also looked at the relationships for the proposed team members and the record of working together as a team on previous projects, whether they were just a brand-new team to come together, or else they has a track record on that. And we also looked at their current workload and their capacity to be able to do the project within the allotted time, and their current workload even with us as a system. Some of the firms that we interviewed are currently working on projects we have, and some are very large projects we're working right now. Ultimately, when the interviews were complete, the committee came together, we debated the merits of each firm based on those five criteria, and then we found Yates-Creisberg met the selection process, the selection process met that criteria the best.
Ms. Carpenter?
I know that in selecting the firms, you know, you will go into negotiation with whatever firm, and one of the things I know with Yates-Creisberg, they had a lot of exceptions. Now, you will negotiate with those exceptions, because they did have quite a few exceptions. So that will be included in the negotiations, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, they had five just notices within the contract. They had some languages like "all" and guarantees and warranties, that sometimes, depending on who your underwriter is and who your insurance carrier is, has languages, you cannot allow those things. It's like a guarantee, as an engineer, we can never guarantee you a project, because obviously, the warranty would not be, or your insurance would not be valid if you did so, based on underwriting. So those are the kind of things that take exception to. We'll make sure we negotiate through those and make some...
Okay, but you do will. And I think one of the, I know that some of us did sit on selection committee, and we did listen in on some of the things, and I think one of the things, them being local, but all the firms, a lot of the finalists, they were all within a 25-mile radius of our area.
Yes, ma'am.
So locally, but these, this is a local firm, and I think that, that's a plus also.
Yes, ma'am, we were very fortunate to have several firms within a very close proximity to do work for us.
Are there other comments or questions? All right, board members, we have a, a motion before us by Mr. Harrison and a second by Mr. Walter to allow staff to begin reviewing with Yates and Kreisberg as the architect for the new Southwest Elementary School, and further authorizes the staff to negotiate the contract. Let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. And that motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Lauter. That now moves us into closed session, and Mr. Schwartz has something he wants to add. Do you want me to read this and then you add it, or?
Yes, then that'd be a good way to do it.
Okay. All right, so board members, I'm going to read the closed session requirements. So I'll need a motion to go into closed session in a second, that the board convene in closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A3 to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between attorney and the public body, which privileges hereby acknowledged and pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A6, to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of employment, or conditions of initial employment, employment of an individual public officer or employee, or prospective public officer or employee, to or to hear or investigate a complaint, charge, or grievance by or against an individual public officer or employee, to review personnel, personnel recommendations. And Mr. Schwartz, I'll turn it over to you.
And also to append to the end of that motion, and to receive advice from the board attorney... Excuse me. And to receive advice from the board attorney concerning the pending cases of, one, Cabarrus County Board of Education versus Board of Trustees of the Teachers and State Employees Retirement System, Dale R. Falwell, State Treasurer, and Stephen C., Director, Retirement Systems Division, Tool, excuse me, Director, Retirement Systems Division, and, second, Catherine Harris versus State of North Carolina, Ed L.
I'll make the motion as it's been stated.
All right, Mr. Walter makes the motion, and Mr. Harrison seconds that motion. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of going into closed session, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. We're in closed session.